View is live.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Clemente, California to order for the Wednesday, November 17th meeting. Commissioner Cosgrove, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, would anyone please rise for the pledge?
Ready, begin.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic or which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tamian, would you call roll for us? Commissioner Prestott Lefler. Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Here.
Commissioner Camp.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem McCann.
Here.
Vice Chair Tyler.
Here.
And Chair Crandall.
Here.
The next item is special orders of business and special presentations, and we have none this evening. We have two sets of minutes to approve the minutes from the regular study session meeting of November 3rd, 2021. Do we have a motion to approve or any corrections?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McCacken.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cosgrove. Voice vote, Commissioner McCacken.
Aye.
Commissioner Tyler.
Aye.
Commissioner McCann.
Aye.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Aye.
Commissioner Camp.
I wasn't present.
Abstain from the meeting, and then Mr. Crandall is an I also. The second minutes are from the regular planning commission meeting of November 3rd. Do we have a motion or revisions?
No revisions. I'll move approval of the minutes from our regular planning commission meeting from November 3rd.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Cosgrove.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCann. Commissioner McCacken.
Aye.
Commissioner Tyler.
Aye.
Commissioner McCann.
Aye.
Mr. Cosgrove.
Aye.
Mr. Camp.
Abstain.
Abstain, and Mr. Crandall is also an I. I did not receive any cards for the oral and written communications. Were there any written communications given to you, Adam, for the section?
No, Chair Crandall, there were none.
The next item is the consent calendar, and we have none. So we go to the public hearings next. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following a disclosure, closure of the public hearing, the planning commissioner will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act on the matter by motion. And anyone who wants to speak to one of the items, fill out one of these cards at the table by the door and give it to our recording secretary, and she will provide me, and we will call you on in order.
Chair Crandall.
Yes.
I, I believe that the majority of people here are for the, for the item number C. So maybe we should consider reordering them to not make them sit through A and B.
I'm not sure. I think we're okay going on A, B, and C. We have three items, and I think the two should go pretty quickly. So I know staff's ready to go in order, so I will.
Okay.
Thank you for that's. Good observation for the public. Very good. So the first item is 214 West Mariposa Cultural Heritage Permit, 21001 Fox Duplex, and David Correo is our staff member presenting this. David, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, Chair members of the commission. Can we see the screen here?
Yes.
Yes.
Beautiful. All right, so the. Project is 214 West Mariposa. It's currently vacant lot and adjacent to a historic property. Zoning is residential medium and coastal zone, and is also within the coastal exclusion order area, which means that coastal commission review and approval will not be required. To the right, we see the project site highlighted. Next to it is the historic site in the red square. So again, the request is a cultural heritage. What triggers this is the existing historic property to the right of the vacant lot. I'll go ahead and provide some quick background on the historic property. It was built in 1927, and it was listed for its architectural style of the Spanish colonial revival. The historical survey form identified some character defining features listed here before us. A porter caixier that we see there over the driveway. We have some spiral columns and a chimney with an arch cap. The home is not that visible due to existing vegetation. So again, the project is a two-story duplex building designed in the contemporary beach style architecture. It is designed to have rooftop decks for each unit, along with two car tandem garages for each unit as well. To the right is a rendering, 3D rendering of the final design for the project. So this project did go to the design review subcommittee twice within the last three months. Main comments and feedback we got from the subcommittee was to improve the project's consistency with the design guidelines, to reduce massing impacts from public view, and to simplify the design. And that was all in an effort to show more sensitivity to the historic property. In response, the applicant did make revisions to address those comments. So to the left, we see the original design. We can see the massing being closer to the right of the property and closer to the historic property. And then to the right, we see that revised design with massing being reduced. So some quick changes that I'll point out here are the second story portion here towards the front was eliminated. There was a shed roof that was added above the entry to be in line with the single-story level of the historic property. There were some materials that were removed to simplify the elevations. And then we added, the applicant added a landscape entry, walkway into the entry. Another comment here was that the original design included removing a hedge that is on the property line being shared with the historic property. One of the comments we received from the historic property owner was his desire to maintain that hedge. So in making the revision, the applicant maintained the front half of the hedge, as we see here, and we'll be removing the second half of that hedge as he worked back towards the end of the property. And here we see 3D aerial renderings showing the original design to the left and the revised design to the right. We did receive a public comment from the Historical Society in support of the project. They had similar comments in the beginning during the first round of design review, where they wanted, they were requesting that the applicant reduce massing impacts. And again, the applicant made changes and addressed those comments. So staff is recommending that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the project subject to conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, David. Does your applicant wish to make presentation this evening?
They did not indicate they'll be here tonight.
Very good. Do any of the commissioners have a question for staff?
Oh, Chair. This is David York. He is the architect on this project.
Oh, there he is.
Hi, I'm David York, the architect for the project. I'm not going to spend a long presentation. I think David covered most of the items. I'll just say, we spent time going back and forth with the subcommittee to modify the project. Basically organized the house. So the garages are as far away from the historical building as possible, and that created more landscaping between where the cars, between the driveway and where the historical building is. And we've pushed it back as far as we could, as far as the entrance, to create a one-story building coming into the project. So I'll be here for questions if the board has, or the commission has any questions.
Thank you, David. And since you had the opportunity, do you want to still speak with your card or just as the applicant?
I turned in my card, but, oh.
Oh, this is a presentation for the applicant. So you're, you're speaking at the right time?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Well, so why don't you stay right there? Do's, do any of the commissioners have a question for either the applicant or the staff member? I see none, so we will close the presentation portion and open it now to public comment. We'll have one card here from Arthur Minusian. Yes, come up to the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
Rest of the residents. You know, it's kind of odd. I was walking down through Mariposa. I live on Mariposa. It's just the upper block, an historical as well. And I noticed the sign saying there's going to be a planning commission hearing or meeting about this property. I'm obviously a little late because if you revise their plan, they must have already submitted a plan that I didn't know about. And I was thinking that because my friend, Robert Migliore, who owns the property next to this project, hadn't said anything about a previous meeting. So anyhow, I'm just going to weigh in and give you my two cents worth. I really feel that even though the project seems to fit the property quite well, I've kind of looked at the renderings. The things that are not really being considered is the light, the air, and the privacy of the historical. And the reason I bring these points to bear is because I not only have an historical building permit number one in this city, not the first structure built, but the first one permitted. And even though up the block, there is more single-story, more beach cottage than there is on the 200 block because 200 block now is more valuable property, larger lots, so they're building them out into duplexes. But my concern being is that even though Robert doesn't want to address it, because I very much on occasion asked him if he would, he says it doesn't matter to him. He's on a reverse mortgage, so immaterial for sure. But for myself, knowing that there's a precedent being set simply by allowing these two-story buildings to be built and overbuilt really for the neighborhood. And it's the same kind of thing that's happened in Southwest. You know, we've had the beach cottage turn into the McMansion. In doing so, you're affecting a lot more than just property values, which are fine. You know, I mean, everybody wants a big property. Myself, I don't. But his light and his air, Robert's, will be greatly affected in that about four o'clock, the sun starts to dip. Now, if you build a two-story next to his house, he's not getting any sun past two o'clock. It just won't be. And I know that because I spent many hours in his backyard with him. And similarly, two, two, three, three doors down from his property going towards the ocean, another couple who had pleaded with you folks some years ago, the commission that is, about their light and air because both sides of them have been, been overbuilt, and now they've sold and gone to Bonsil and have a nice property there. And I'm afraid that's what's happening to the character of our town. I've been here since 73, so I've seen some changes. And I still don't get why one is so apt to overbuild their property. The other, the other story that isn't being told, I don't think by anyone, is the parking situation. And on our 100 block, am I over yet? No, not quite. Our 100 block, we fight for parking on street sweeping day. It isn't so bad, 10 seconds, isn't so bad on the 200 block, but it will be because every property overbuild brings three or four more cars onto the street. Plenty of house. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Do we have any other cards I need for this item? Okay, we will close public comment and open it up for discussion. I'm actually going to call on Commissioner Camp. This went through design review, and if you could just give your observations of what we went through at design review and what we eventually have in front of us.
Sure. Yeah, we looked at this project twice. The original submittal was, I would agree, I would agree, overbuilt. Not only the massing, I think in the scale, but also there was just a lot of unusual, I'll say unusual ornamentation added to the project. So we had recommended not, we didn't recommend a specific design, but going back and simplifying the project and trying to reduce the impact directly adjacent to the historical residence, which it's interesting, in this case, it was right next door. Although it can be within 300 feet. So obviously, there is an impact. You know, we have to consider the fact that it meets all the guidelines. It meets all the setback and the height requirements. They're entitled to, you know, to build a project like this. And I think that we, during the two sessions that we had with the applicant, they really came a long ways. You know, is it a perfect design? I don't know what a perfect design is, but I believe that if you look at the original design and then look at what we've done in terms of making it more compatible and also more appropriately suitable to the property next door, I think it's a, it's a good project. I mean, I recommend that we go ahead and approve it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments by commissioners?
Chair Crandall, I'll, I'll comment real quickly. I'm on the design review subcommittee, subcommittee as well. And yeah, we, we worked with the applicant, and the applicant was responsive to our comments and doing what we could to reduce the impacts to the historic structure adjacent. And like Commissioner Camp said, this applicant does have the right to build within the guidelines of the zoning on that property. So they were responsive. I think we lessened the impact to the historical structure, and I'm in support of the project.
Very good. Well, my only question is, is this outside of the Spanish colonial revival, you know, requirement area where they have to? David, I believe it is.
It is correct.
Yeah. The architectural overlay, correct?
Correct. It's not.
Very good. And one thing I will, for the public's point, when we review a project, we have findings we have to make. And there's a list of them that you'll see in the agenda and our packet, and I can certainly make all of those findings. So we would be open to a motion.
Chair Crandall, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner McCann.
I moved that we approve cultural heritage permit 21-001 Fox Duplex to consider construction of a two-story duplex building on a vacant lot adjacent to the property on the city's list of designated historical resources.
Do we have a second?
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Tyler. We will do a, and motion by Commissioner McCann. Commissioner McCacken.
I'm voting in favor because there's two space car garage for each unit, which has not been a requirement with our ADU. So I'm in favor. It's parking. Architecturally, I'm not so hot about it.
Vote aye. Commissioner Connor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCann.
Aye.
Commissioner Cosgrove.
Aye.
Commissioner Camp.
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is aye, so it is a unanimous vote. The next item is item B 140 West Avenue to Pico discretionary sign permit 21127 casino dance sign. David Correo is also presenting this one for the city. So David, you have the floor.
Can we see that, commissioners?
Yes.
Right, right. All right. So before, as we have a discretionary sign permit, this is for the casino located at 140 West Avenue to Pico within the zoning listed in the, on the screen. It is also within the newly established North Beach Historic District. So again, the request is a discretionary sign permit. This is for the installation of a neon sign and to increase or to add a sign that's more than 25 square feet of sign area per business in the A overlay. I'll explain a little bit about that. So within the architectural overlay, each business is limited to only 25 square feet of sign area. However, with the discretionary sign permit approval, a business can exceed that threshold. So this is a request here tonight. So a little bit about the casino. It was built in 1937 by the String Brothers, a prominent builder in San Clemente. Again, it was listed in the city's list of historic resources for its style of architecture, Spanish colonial revival, for its regional attraction, which was serving for Big Band performances and dancing. Around 1930s, in the late 1930s, this dance sign that seemed to the right of the screen was installed. So this project before us tonight is in effort to restore that sign that would promote the dancing events happening around the 1930s. So to the left, we see a photo simulations showing the dance sign that pretty accurately represents what was there back in the 1930s. To the right is a blow up of that dance sign. Below the larger dance sign example is the neon, and how it would be displayed. It is made out of aluminum channel letters, and it will have exposed warm white neon at 3,500 Kelvin. So this project was also reviewed by the Cultural Heritage Subcommittee back in September. Some of the comments we received were to have staff identify the hours of operation for the sign, and that was based on other uses within North Beach, North Beach District, and having that sign turn off consistent with other uses as well. We did find that the, the hour was 2:00 AM, the consistent closing time for, for uses there in the North Beach District. So we are adding a condition that would require the, the sign, the neon sign to be turned off at 2:00 AM, no later than 2:00 AM. Another comment was to have the applicant identify the color temperature, which it did address. We do have an example of that in the staff report. And then staff was asked to review the in and out light intensity approval and how that was carried forward. So for in and out, there was a condition that required the applicant to install a dimmer on the lighting feature. And that would allow the city planner to request any changes after the fact if any lighting impacts were present. So for this project, we're also adding a condition that would require the dimmable feature on the neon sign so you can have that ability to request a lower in brightness if needed. So staff analysis, we did communicate with the applicant and let them know that this will have to be reviewed by the California Coastal Commission. That's given for the, because of the neon lighting that's being proposed and the, the square footage of the sign. Staff did find that the proposed sign is consistent with the architectural overlay standards, the sign ordinance requirements, and the Secretary of Interior standards as well, given that the material, design, and the size are all compatible with the existing building. And we're also maintaining the architectural and historical integrity of the property, of the building. Regarding lighting, the sign is directed away from residences. And again, we are adding conditions that would further address the lighting, potential lighting impacts. Again, we're adding a dimmable feature on the sign, and we're also adding a condition that would require the neon tubing to be covered on the, on the sides and the top to, to limit light spillage onto the, the residences. Regarding visual impacts, we did assess this against our public view corridors, identifying the general plan. And since the sign is entirely within the private property, we found that there aren't any negative impacts to the view corridors. We also did find that the project is consistent with general plan policies and design guidelines. And here's a visual showing the direction of the sign in relation to residential properties highlighted in brown to the right. We did receive a letter from the Historical Society in support of this sign, given that it, again, is restoring a historical sign that accurately represents what was there back in the 1930s. And we have that attached in the staff report as well. So per staff's analysis in the staff report, we are recommending that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the project subject to conditions of approval and add a condition of approval 7.19, which reads, the signs and neon lighting must shut off no later than 2:00 AM. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, David. Does the applicant choose to make a presentation?
I believe the applicant is logged into Zoom.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make a couple comments if I could. We've been very proud stewards of the Casino San Clemente since 2009, when we purchased the building. Next year will be our 85th anniversary, and this is one element that I've wanted for a long time to install as kind of the crowning, final element to our long restoration of the, the building. So I would greatly appreciate your consideration. I appreciate David's time up to this point. We, we see no issues in complying with all the conditions of approval. In fact, there may be many times when, excuse me. There may be many times when we don't even have the sign on, because as you know, we host many private events, and some of them may choose not to have the sign on. So we would definitely have it off probably by 1:00 AM, which is our official time for private events to end. So I think we can definitely comply and be well within your conditions of approval. So again, I just want to thank you all. I hope this can get done in short order so that we can move on to coastal and get this approved, so we can flick the switch, and you'll be invited in our 85th year next year.
Thank you very much, Linda. Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant or staff?
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant. The Historical Society speaks very highly of what you've done there, and I want to thank you for that. That's, you know, you're doing good work for the city. And so what, the only question I had was the sign implications to the general public. Sort of in a form of an advertisement, you know, and so I wondered your feelings about that. And it sounds like what you said in your presentation is you're going to talk to, when you have a private event, you're going to talk to those people who are organizing that event, whether or not they want that sign on or off. Is that, did I hear you that correctly on that?
That is correct. We often entertain bridal parties, and it may be that a bride or groom in their background photo prefer not to have a dance sign, so we would defer to the client's request.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and I think that's a, that, that, that addresses my concern, the only other concern. And I, I suppose you thought about is just members of the general public wandering in, thinking, well, you're open for business, and really, you're not. You're really, you're, it's a different kind of venue. So you've thought about that, and you're comfortable with that?
I've thought about that. They're wandering in now, asking where our slot machines are, so I'm hoping. I'm hoping to have a better answer for them next year.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I, I have a question for, for staff. Who, what's the makeup of the Cultural Heritage Subcommittee? Like, who sits on that?
It is the design review sub.
Okay. Okay.
That's one of that, the answer to her question is it's the Design Review Subcommittee's arm of. Is the cultural heritage committee, so. Okay, is there any public comment on this?
Yeah, I think we we talked about this. We think it's cool. I mean, it's a great. To the building, but I think we talked about using neon versus LED.
We gave them the option because LED certainly has a longer life and is easier to control dimming. But I think we left it up to their their choice.
Okay, David, did you address that with the applicant at all and?
We we did and maybe Linda can speak to that, but we did bring that up as an option or for them to consider. But they decided to stick with the neon that was proposed.
Yeah, I think if you read the detail of David's report, there were a couple of reasons why the fabricator recommended sticking with non LED. LED exposed to the western elements and we do get quite a bit of direct sun on that side of the casino as well as. Rolling fog in from the ocean would corrode the LED fairly quickly. And the original sign did have actual neon. So we preferred to make the sign as authentic as possible and also avoid unnecessary repairs in the future.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
I have just some comments. I'm in full support of the sign. I just don't think it matches exactly what was there historically with the font. Based on the photos that are provided in the packet. And I obviously don't want to hold this up, so I just, I don't know how to go about that. But if you look at page forty four in the packet, there's an enlarged photo of the of the building. And I mean, even if you look at the E. The E has like, the center line on the E should be going past the back line and things like that. And so I have no issue with this sign. I just would want it, I'd like to condition that it, in fact, maybe match. The historic photos that are provided in the packet. And also the like explanation, explanation point should be higher, things like that. So I think if we're going to do it, let's get it right the first time and get it to exactly match.
Very good. Those are very good comments. Any other comments? So we're actually into discussion now. I would concur with Commissioner Tyler on that. And sometimes the presentations don't match exactly what's being built, but I think just putting the caveat in there that it will. Match the original sign as closely as possible. And this is an historic district, our first one in the city. And this is going to be kind of one of the anchors in it and we're happy to have it there and may improve. So do we have a motion that would include that?
Certainly.
Who can request a discretionary sign permit? Anybody, any business or just businesses within the architectural overlay district?
Any.
Anybody can.
Commissioner McCacken, if I can answer that question. Adam Matamian, Deputy Community Development Director. Discretionary sign permit can be pulled for a number of reasons. In the architectural overlay, it would be required for a sign that's over twenty five square feet. However, discretionary sign permit is also the mechanism that would permit a master sign program. Which any building would require that has four or more signs. And the the property owner needs to approve the. The application, but a tenant could could be the applicant on one of those signs.
Do we have any hard standards on what our guidelines to grant discretionary sign permit?
Yes, there are parameters. Under no circumstances can certain signs be over sixty four square feet. In the architectural overlay, so.
Also monument sign sizes.
Yeah, monument sign sizes. But we generally cannot regulate or or the content of the sign. But as far as the placement of the sign, the materials of the sign. The lighting when it's on, basically the the time, place and manner regulations we can we can do. A discretionary sign permit, though, that can answer your question, I think. There's a potential that any commercial business could could find themselves in a situation. Where they need a discretionary sign permit if they want a sign that is outside of the four corners of the code. Related to the signs permitted on their property by right. Thank you. Does that answer your question?
I make a motion that we approve a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California. Approving discretionary sign permit twenty one dash one twenty seven casino dance sign to exceed the maximum allowed sign area of twenty five square feet. For a business within the architectural overlay district and to install exposed neon lighting on a twenty five square foot aluminum channel letter sign. On historic resource known as Casino San Clemente located at one forty West Avenue to Pico. And I would add a condition of approval that the Community Development Director or Deputy Community Development Director. Work with staff and the applicant to ensure that the sign identified on page four of the packet. Matches the photos on page forty four and forty seven of the packet specifically looking at shape of the E, shape of the C. The curving between the letters and the location of the explanation point.
Commit commissioners, I would like to remind that staff is also recommending that we. Add another condition of approval, seven point nineteen on the screen.
And I'd also add condition of approval seven point one nine. That the signs neon lighting be shut off no later than two AM.
So we have a motion by Tyler. Do we have a second?
A second that.
A second by Commissioner Cosgrove, Commissioner McCacken.
Are you just discussing voting?
Voting. And Commissioner Crandall is also an I. So congratulations, that will be a nice addition to our. First historic district.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to the public for sitting through those before we start the next item. The next item is item C, one three one one Kai Batito. Conditional use permit twenty one two thirteen Calvary Chapel and Adam Matamian is the presenter. Thank you Chair Crandall. Adam Matamian, Deputy Community Development Director. Tonight I will be presenting this item for a conditional use permit number twenty one two thirteen for Calvary Chapel. Kate, if you would not mind putting up the PowerPoint. All right, so this is a request for a conditional use permit at one three one one Kai Batito in suite one seventy five. No, that's fine. You can move forward. The the application, as as mentioned, is for a conditional use permit. Conditional use permits require that certain findings are met in order to approve those permits. In in essence, the findings to approve this project are that the proposed use is permitted within the subject zone. And comply with the general plan, specific plan, and the intent of the zoning in which it is located. The site is suitable for the type and intensity of use that's proposed. The proposed use will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare. And that the proposed use will not negatively impact surrounding land uses. Next slide, please. Little bit of background, the site that is being considered for this use is an eight point eight six acre lot. It has an existing eighty nine thousand five hundred forty four square foot building. And a parking lot that provides four hundred and thirty one parking spaces. There are four office tenants currently in the building and as well as another church, Saddleback Church. That operates in a in a different suite than the one Calvary Chapel proposes to utilize. The property is located within the Tulega Business Park and surrounding land uses include residential and commercial industrial. One note I need to correct on the staff report, the nearest residential in the staff report was listed as seven hundred feet away. It is in fact three hundred feet away is, and you can go to the next slide, please. Nearest residential is located across from Avenue to Pico, which is the main thoroughfare in this picture, running left to right. The property, the subject property is outlined in red and the nearest residential is to the north that. And like I said, from the from the building to the nearest residential lot is approximately three hundred feet. Next slide, please. The proposed project is to utilize an existing tenant space of nineteen thousand four hundred ninety nine square feet. To accommodate a church with worship area classrooms and to be used for Sunday school and various small group meetings. As well as a children's ministry or excuse me, the children's nursery. The applicants are proposing to provide two Sunday worship services that are typically from one thirty PM to three PM. And then again, from four thirty PM to six PM, maximum attendance for the Sunday services is seven hundred people. On Wednesdays, they propose a worship service in the evenings from seven PM to nine PM for a maximum of four hundred attendees. While also conducting ancillary classes in their youth ministry with about a hundred students. In those, in those classes together. Other church activities throughout the week would be smaller groups as well as the administrative services of the church. Which would be negligible in terms of attendance during the week. Next slide, please. An analysis of the project showed that the use is allowed subject to a conditional use permit. The proposed operations can be accommodated with existing parking subject to conditions of approval. The conditions of approval are designed to do a few things. The first is to ensure that. Two church uses do not conflict and have overlapping church services and that there is a. A a time allotted between the services to allow for cars to exit and and enter the site. And then also to ensure that if if things should change for the saddleback service times. That this applicant is responsible for changing their service times to accommodate. And the reason for that is because there is an existing conditional use permit on the property for Saddleback Church. That is not being amended today and that conditional use permit allows them to have services on Sundays. Now, over the past few years, we have, there's been information provided as far as when their services occur. Those are, those are typically before the Sunday services proposed here. So what we're doing is we're putting the burden on this applicant to ensure that their services do not overlap with saddleback churches. There will be a little bit more discussion on that as as I continue the presentation. However, in. To also address any potential parking or traffic management issues, the applicants have a volunteer traffic management program. They utilize this program in their San Juan Capistrano location and they're proposing to use it here. There was some information provided by the applicant that is in an attachment of the staff report. Essentially what they're proposing is a volunteer force of twelve people to help facilitate parking management on the site. And to help route people through the parking lot. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses and staff is comfortable saying that because there is already an existing church on the site. And that church has not generated any code compliance complaints and has not led to any code compliance action. To enforce the existing CP that exists. The proposed use here is not an intensification of a church use because the two uses would not be operating at the same time. It may be providing for more church services, but they're not proposing anything that saddleback couldn't do otherwise. Additionally, the noise generated by, any noise generated by the church needs to comply with the city's noise control ordinance. This is an indoor church use. The doors and windows are would be closed during the services and and as mentioned before. Staff has not received any noise complaints about the existing church services there. Additionally, the noise is not anticipated to affect the residential properties. Due to the the way that the the properties lay in in proximity to one another. The residential properties are at a at a higher elevation than the church and there's a berm right behind the church. That separates it from the street where the, where any noise coming directly from the building would most likely. Be dissipated. Additionally, all of the surrounding businesses would are generally not going to be open on Sundays. Nor have we heard any complaints from them related to the saddleback church that operates there today. Next slide, please. There are some future considerations with this approval. The first is that the approval of the project would result in two conditional use permits for two two separate portions of this building. However, there is a, as as noted, there's no. Immediate impact of having these two conditional use permits because they're they're basically dovetailing operations. And it's not an intensification of any particular use. However, what it does allow for is a future combining of the two conditional use permits. Should one of the churches move on and the the owner of the property is the one that really holds the conditional use permit. Because it runs with the land and so one church could effectively assume assume control of both conditional use permits. Staff has included a condition of approval to address this issue. Of a desire to combine the conditional, the two conditional use permits. And what we're attempting to do here is that if there, if in the future, one church would like to to expand their worship area. To encompass both of the conditional use permits. As long as what they want to do complies with the parking requirements of the site. Meaning that they they don't, they don't expand the seating capacity to require more parking than is available on the property. That that city staff could review that proposal and make a minor modification to one or both. The conditional use permits to allow for one church to occupy, to occupy both suites. This is not actually a special condition of approval. It's just being put in here. More for more for just customer service so that they're aware of the process by which they could ask for a minor amendment to a to a permit. The process is is identified in the municipal code. And what it allows for is for minor modifications to be to be applied for. And then based on the city planner's review of the potential impacts of that modification. That it can either be approved by the city planner or it would require, it would be required to go back to a public hearing. So if if somebody wants to use both of the conditional use permits in a way that would intensify the use. They would need to come back to the to the Planning Commission to make those modifications. But if the modifications are are something smaller than that, then city staff potentially could. Make those modifications and help facilitate this operator to to expand, to expand their use. Within the site, not the intensity, but just the the footprint under which they they operate. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, staff, based on the information provided by staff in the staff report and in this presentation. Staff believes that the findings for approval of this permit can be met. And based on that, staff recommends that the planning commission do two things. The first is determine the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And the second is to adopt resolution PC twenty one dash zero one nine approving conditional use permit twenty one dash two one three Calvary Chapel. Since the publishing of the staff report, staff has received one comment from a nearby resident who had concerns. That information was. That information was provided to the planning commission as well as the applicant. There is an applicant here today. Mr. Chris Lewis and I've invited him to make a presentation if he still desires to do so. And with that, I will end my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Adam. Would the representative, representing the church like to step to the podium and make a presentation?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Lewis, CFO and Board Secretary of Calvary Chapel. And I'm joined tonight, I'm going to share my time with Pastor John Randall. So. Our team is really excited to present to you, establishing a new permanent home in San Clemente. Along with the information already submitted with our CUP application. I wanted to present you with some additional information about Calvary Chapel. My hope is that the information presented will not only be useful for this panel, but also address concerns nearby businesses and residents may have concerning the project. To give some history, Calvary Chapel was met in San Juan Capistrano for over 15 years. And is in good standing with the city of San Juan Capistrano, all of its neighbors, including an adjacent elementary school, a mission, or the mission. The Catholic Church and other institutions that surround our building. We've been a growing church and have been actively seeking for a new home in Southern Orange County area for many years. With COVID restrictions in 2020, our church was invited to meet at the out, outside on Sunday. At the parking lot at the San Clemente outlets. This was, this allowed people to either sit outside or in their cars for the service. As a result, the restaurants and shops at the outlets who were struggling were extremely grateful for the business they received from our attendees during this difficult period. Our good standing with the outlets and the surrounding area has allowed us to continue Sunday service at this location. In 2021, when the opportunity came up to move to Caye Batido location in San Clemente. We were able to secure an agreement with the owners and move forward with CP process. In the information packet that got submitted yesterday to. The. It basically summarizes the businesses and some of the residents that are supporting the CUP. Interesting fact I found out was about 50% of our attendees actually come from San Clemente. So. That's based on financial records. One of the most significant letters you'll see is from the owners of the buildings of the Ocean Breeze Business Park, which is adjacent to our current project. These business owners receive the normal public notifications of the CUP. But also proactively took upon themselves to express to the planning commission their reasons of support for our project. So. The overall main concerns of the CUP are traffic, parking and noise mitigation. Regarding traffic, the time of use for the church building will not add additional traffic during peak daytime hours. Between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. It's pretty light use. For church service times on Sunday, the traffic entering and exiting are of short duration, usually 15 to 30 minutes. The cars entering and exiting the facility should not cause adverse effects to the residents on the other side of Avenue to Pico. Regarding parking, our parking lot is sufficient, as Adam specified, to accommodate our parking needs. And we do not foresee using outside parking at this time. Our parking team, which he alluded to, consists of 12 individuals who are connected by radios. Will manage all aspects of parking as we do our, as we do at our current facility in San Juan Capistrano and at the outlets. Regarding noise, Calvary Chapel were really sensitive to noise complaints. We're familiar with operating in very tight quarters adjacent to residential areas and proactively avoiding noise complaints. Being outside in the public area at the outlets with residential neighborhoods directly across from Avenue to Hermosa. The church has had a strong commitment to sound and noise management. For 18 months, we've been outside at the outlets when there was. There was a few reports made to us about sound. We established direct communication with the people that made it. The concerned individuals and we resolved the issues quickly and. And believe, or and quickly. Our new project location has a similar residential commitment as you, you seen or. Where right across Avenue to Pico, we have some residents. And so the church will continue its strong commitment to be a good neighbor, establish a good rapport with anyone that has concerns. With being able to work cooperatively with our neighbors when we've operated in an outside venue. Will have even more success when the church moves inside. What is being done at the outlets on Sunday will not be what is done at the new property. So we're outside. Speakers, things like that. We're not taking that and moving it there. The goal is to move inside. So. With San Clemente being the most southern portion of Orange County, our church name will be changed from Calvary Chapel San Juan Capistrano to Calvary South OC. During the conditional use permitting process, we have had excellent experience. Working with the planning department of San Clemente and want to thank them for their assistance during this process. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by thanking you for working so diligently with us. I know that over the last four months, taking time to answer our questions. Leading us in the right direction in this process has been a blessing for us. I also want to thank the members of the city council for meeting with us this evening. As was mentioned, my name is John Randall and I've been a resident here in San Clemente for the last 16 years. My wife and I have raised our four children here. They have attended the schools in our district. This is our home. This is our community. The last 15 years I've served as the senior pastor at Calvary Chapel and that is currently located in San Juan Capistrano. In addition to meeting at our current campus, as was mentioned, over the last 18 months, we have met at the outlets of San Clemente, provided help. Hope, encouragement and love for all in attendance. And it is my heartfelt prayer that when you read the emails and the letters. Of the residents and business owners that attend our church that we've put together for you and you listen to some of the testimonies of these people tonight. Who are members of our congregation, you will find that they represent a broad cross section of our community. And it is our hope that our CUP will be granted and that we may continue to be a blessing in serving our city. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff or the applicant? I see none. Oh, Commissioner Camp. Did you want to go? Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, thank you for choosing San Clemente. I want you to feel welcome here. I have really one concern and that is voiced by a resident around the noise. So it's been reassuring to hear that the attitude is, hey. We're going to work with residents. If they come forward and they have, they're complaining, we'll work with them. Am I hearing that correctly? Okay. Noise is a funny thing. It's kind of in the ear of the holder. And to one person may be nothing, to another person it might be a quality of life issue. So that would be my only concern is that there would be some way for. There to be a resolution, you know, and I think it's the amplification and it's probably your music. The instruments, things of that nature that could have a sound frequency that would perhaps emanate out from the building and. Rise up that hill, hill and hit their home with a sound wave that may be disturbing. I don't know. But we did receive a letter, just one. And, and I'm empathetic to the quality of life for everybody, your, your group as well as the adjacent neighbors. So. I don't know how this evolves. You know, it sounds like, you know, you guys are going to grow, you're gonna, you're, you're, you want to make this your permanent home, which is wonderful. As you grow, you know, and time passes. I don't know if there's a way that we can build into the CUP a way of. Addressing the, you know, noise. I don't know if we can have a condition here that would. Enable us to request a noise measurement or whatever. It may not even come to that. It sounds like. The, the church administration doesn't want that. They want to be able to just resolve it and have everybody be happy. That's wonderful. I would just ask the staff to think about that. So that we could demonstrate to the community that the concern of noise can be addressed through the process. Sir, did you want to?
Oh, I just wanted to, are you asking, are you, is it possible to comment?
Absolutely.
I agree with you 100% that I think we want to be sensitive to those who are around us. I think. One letter that was submitted and I read the letter personally, so I know what it says, was directed toward the previous church that. Are the church that's there currently and how they were treated. I can't, I don't, I don't think it's right to judge us on the basis of somebody else's performance when, when our record is good. And I would say that we are, we are good neighbors and I, I think whatever you're proposing as it relates to CUP. I just would say, is that something that is conditioned for every church in San Clemente as it relates to sound and we're sensitive to that. We have professional. Even in the building process and architecture aspect of it, we take that into consideration as to. We, we don't want sound to emanate from this building. We want it inside and, and again, we. The design is, is professional and how we would, we would take that into consideration. So that would be my, my response to that.
Sheriff Crossgrove, if I could, yeah, just speak on that for a second. While. We, city staff appreciates when business, businesses or, or. Operators in the. Commercial areas of town. While they take it upon themselves to be good neighbors, our code does not care. Our code has standards. And our code enforcement personnel who I oversee have a sound meter and we go out and we deal with. With noise complaints frequently. While I have no doubt that Calvary Chapel's. Going to operate in a fashion that does not bother the neighbors. At the end of the day, if they create sound. Between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, that produces a volume of noise at a residential property above 65 decibels. We can, one, find that out and two, we can take enforcement action if that's necessary. I don't believe it's going to be necessary, but one of the conditions of approval is that the applicants will abide by all city codes.
I saw that.
Include the city's noise control ordinance. So, so from a staff perspective. There's really no evidence that this, this use is flagrantly going to create.
I wasn't implying that.
And I'm not saying that you are, but from staff's perspective, we don't believe that this is going to be a noise.
I just want to make sure residents understand the process.
Yeah, there are, there, there is a process in place where that.
And we just outlined that and I think that's helpful and that sounds fair to you guys as well, right? Oh, because that's objective, right? If it's measured and then you can be presented with those findings, you're happy to resolve it. I think that, that sounds like a fair process.
Absolutely. And, and to the, to the pastor's point, this does apply to every, every single business. Including residential properties, nobody says.
Commissioner Camp? Okay, a couple of things. So Calvary Chapel is going to consolidate at this location because currently you're at. Location that near the mission. And you're also at the outlet. Right? So those are going to be discontinued or are they? Yeah, okay. So you're going to consolidate that. And saddleback has been here for how long? Is it in the report? I didn't notice.
Saddleback, their approval was in 2012. However, our records indicate that they didn't actually start operating until about 2014.
Okay. And during the time that they've been there, no complaints have been lodged or they have. I mean, we got this letter today.
Yes, so complaints can occur in a number of ways. When the city says that we have not received any complaints, what we're referring to is that the code compliance division has not been alerted to any actual complaints. Code compliance has a, a system in place of tracking complaints and addressing those complaints. It is very rare that we would receive it, that the city in some other form or fashion would receive a complaint that doesn't get transmitted. Over to the code compliance division. So if it's not in our, if it's not in that system, it's, it's very unlikely that we have received complaints.
Okay, so the answer is, is no, you haven't.
I've knocked my knowledge.
Okay.
Okay, we will have a time for discussion. Have you submitted a card? You certainly can.
Okay, that was one question. Another question I had is. This, one of these conditions talks about. The intention of Calvary Chapel to take over the other CUP. So there's two CUPs. And then you said that would, that would be a staff level. Approval for them to take over both CUPs.
Depends, depending on what they do. An example would be, so this conditional use permit for. Saddleback Church allows for an attendance of up to 916.
Yep.
People. Based on the amount of parking they have, if no other, if no other uses are operating on Sundays. 431 parking spaces would allow for, I believe, more than 1,600. Potentially more than 1,600 people at a church service. So there's a, there's a potential that the both conditional use permits could be utilized at the same time. But. Staff would not identify that as a major change if they're still operating within the, the corners of that. Of, of both of their approvals, which would be that, that the uses on site do not exceed the required amount of parking.
Okay, so as they go in. The churches are required to have separate service times, right?
Right now, yes.
But potentially. You could double up. For instance, you could, you've got, so you've got 700, I see is the maximum attendance. For Calvary Chapel and then you said 900, yeah, 916 for saddleback. So there could be an improvement to the space, which allows for both those numbers to be added together. Assuming there's enough parking. Because you get 431.
Well, well, there are, there won't be other considerations. I don't know that I would say that staff is comfortable approving. One service of 1,600 people, just the, the flow of traffic to and from the site. Might be something that would make that not a minor modification. But a, a, if it's, if, if the proposal is a reasonable increase to. What is currently being, being operated here. Then we're, you know, staff does have the ability to approve that administratively. Rather than bringing them back.
Yeah, I guess I'm just not understanding that. It seems like what we're approving here tonight, because we want to approve this. Is, is to allow that to happen on a staff level. If you decide that that's acceptable. So I'm just, I want to understand what we're approving.
So what you're approving is, is the. Is the actual request to have services in this particular suite with the maximum number of, of. 700, 700. What I'm telling you is that the code allows for a process for. The holders of conditional use permits or any other permits to come back to the city to request minor modifications in the future. Or I should say modifications in the future. Depending on the, the severity of the request. Staff can either prove it administratively or will, will basically push it up into a public hearing.
Okay, so you'll like it at that time.
Yes, yeah, and there's, there, those discussions have not been had as far as what. Calvary Chapel may want to propose in the future. Staff is just looking into the future to anticipate how, how this property may operate and what the potential. Outcomes of having two conditional use permits on a property would be. Especially with the potential that one of, one of the people's head or are applying, you know, that have one of the CUPs ends up purchasing the entire property.
Okay. I think that's clear. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think that. It's rare that we have a, a facility where it's already been tested, you know, which it has for church use.
Yeah.
It's been successful. So from that standpoint, I think it makes a lot of sense to allow another church here. In addition. Yeah, you've got 431 parking spaces that this is part of a shared, this is a shared parking agreement. And so it's, it's just good city planning to have a parking lot that's being used all the time where there's no conflict. So I'm totally in favor of this kind of a process. And I'd like to make it. I, I think it as easy as possible for them to take advantage of parking that's available. If we're looking, you know, if we're looking at that tonight. But I just want to be clear that that's something that would be considered at, at that time, not necessarily part of our approval here tonight.
So potentially.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? I want to be clear because, okay, you know, as I read this, the Calvary Chapel is bought, you know, in the process of buying. This property, which means they'll control both of those CUPs at that, at some future, future day, right? Well, that's okay, it's being, it's being discussed. I don't want, I don't want to be, belabor the point, but I just want to make sure we understand what we're approving here tonight. That that could potentially happen and it would be a staff level approval.
Uh, only at a certain, um, intensity. It's not identified what that is. But if it's a high visibility item, I think staff would move it up. If it's just a minor change, they would, uh. Take care of that. Mal, did you have any comment you wanted to make?
I think that's correct. I was just going to note, um, that exact fact and. The fact that we have two CUPs potentially out here, right? And the first CUP is specifically for. Um, given periods of time, it's going to be difficult for staff. To overlap those, those, those time periods in the CUPs administratively, right? That, that kind of change will likely come back to the commission because that would be changing the terms of the initial CUP. So it's likely if it, if it rises to that level, that the planning commission will see those types of changes. Um, short of that, staff has the ability and the flexibility to make changes.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mal. Any other questions that?
Are noise control ordinance, is it just decibels? Having good vibration, because you can have low decibel, but intense vibration still occur like in a very intense bass. Because the one letter talked about, didn't so much talk about, well, they talked about affluent sound, but they talked about shaking, you know?
Uh, like to answer your question.
Like bass, intense bass.
Yes, Commissioner, just to answer your question directly, no, vibration is not something that's, that's. That's specifically identified in the code. However, it's more than just decibels. There are, uh, essentially three ways that our noise control ordinance controls. Um, nuisance sound. The first is. Uh, by list, by identifying a list of criteria, uh, under which a code compliance officer. Can identify a nuisance sound based on the context of the sound. Um, uh, you know, the proximity, uh, that the sound travels, that. The, the frequency of that sound, various, there's about ten of those criteria. The second is an actual decibel ceiling. Um, and that, that varies depending on the receiver property, um, what kind of property it is. And the time of the day. Uh, and then the third way that it, um, regulates sound is by prohibiting. Uh, certain types of sound. Um, so, uh, for instance, um, like, like horns. Um, horns, the, the, the sound of horns is, is prohibited except in, um, for vehicles. And that's just a specific sound regardless of how loud it is, that type of, that type of noise is not allowed.
That should, get close to answering your question close.
Uh, what I would say though, um, to try to better answer your question is. Um, a nuisance is anything that, um. That disturbs a neighborhood or a community. Um, and, and so there, the city is not limited. To just looking at noise. If there is a, a vibration that is created, um, and it affects multiple. Multiple people or, you know, a large portion of, of a neighborhood, um, or surrounding area, uh, surrounding properties. City staff, we do, we would be able to, um, to. Deal with that noise. It may not be the noise control ordinance that would do it, but we do have the ability to, uh, address nuisances. Um, and that's, that's in a, a, a separate chapter of our municipal code.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Uh, I'm going to move and open up to a public comment at this point. Um, Adam, do we have any to read in the record or, uh, since you published it to us? Uh, doesn't need to, and they weren't requested to be in the, uh.
Yes, that was, that was just a written communication that was, uh, transmitted to the.
Okay, very good. Well, each applicant is going to have three minutes to speak. The, um. Red light will go on and then there'll be an amber light. Uh, I mean, what is it, thirty seconds or one minute, uh, to go? So when you see the amber light, you have one minute to, uh, finish up. Um, I'll read out three names so you can kind of queue up. The first is Christopher Lewis. The second is John Randall. And the third is Nikki Magnuson. So if you please come up the podium. Excuse me? Uh, if you've got a card, yes, absolutely.
Um, just to address that letter that, that appeared, um, you know, we don't, we don't know everything that happened. During this last year with COVID and things. Um, we do know that Saddleback Church did meet outside and they did have application. Things like that.
That makes sense.
So that's, you know, that's a, that's a concern. So if you have speakers outside, uh, that's going to be an issue. Um, the other concern we saw in the letter, and we actually met this couple that came down to the outlets, um, last Saturday, last Sunday. And one of their concerns is, and I addressed it in, in my discussion, is they, they, they thought maybe we were going to take what we were doing at the outlets and take it up the hill. And we sure, that wasn't going to happen. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Uh, John Randall, are you here? Okay, there you go. Are you good? Okay, very good. The next one, Nikki Magnuson, then Gretchen Scheckler. And then Brock Massurn.
Good evening. Um, my name is Nikki Magnuson and I've been a proud resident of San Clemente for thirty-two years. My heart and dedication to our city and community has driven so much of my personal, professional and financial decisions for myself and my family for the past three decades. Um, I own the San Clemente store, the outlets, and that is, it promotes local and small businesses that hold true to our small native beach town vibes. Um, I'm also the head of schools and trustees of San Clemente Christian School, which is a small Christian school committed to being a light in our community. Two years ago, our school crossed paths with Calvary San Juan and I quickly realized that this wonderful organization had similar values. And their involvement in San Clemente and neighboring cities was just what this world needed. Timer got on. I was blown away by the dedication, time, resources and kindness each and every member and volunteer of their staff. And organization displayed. It was very refreshing to see that integrity was still alive and well. And that people did what they said and they always kept their promises. And, and with that sound, that was the first thing that came to mind. They will keep their promises. Um, in a time where our country, state and city are divided, this church has provided hundreds, if not thousands. So much hope, light, love, and most importantly, truth. A quick example of this was last year, just around this time, when so many people decided that Christmas was canceled. Um, due to the pandemic, Calvary made the bold decision that Christmas was not canceled. And in fact, they opened their church in San Juan for all of our families and students to perform their much anticipated Christmas program in their building. They opened their doors for our school and even gave our students a surprise snow performance. They opened up the ceilings and snow came down. It was just. Such an amazing event for them. Um, this is just a small drop, drop in the bucket of how they have impacted our youth. And giving our children a chance to maintain some type of normalcy in this crazy world. Fast forward to this current school year, they have been sending their top musicians, staffs and members to donate their time to help lead our chapels. And as well as help our school community in so many ways. I strongly believe that Calvary South OC will be an asset to our community and any community it takes root in. The benefits of their generosity, their leadership. Hope and love will not only impact our city for the current time, but for generations to come. As a faithful and active resident of San Clemente, I strongly support the CUP request for this organization to occupy this building. And I thank you guys so much for your service for our city.
Thank you, Nikki, and I love your store. Uh, Gretchen Scheckler.
Good evening. Um, I am so honored to be here tonight and I will be emotional, but that's just who I am. Um, I've been a resident of San Clemente for thirty-four years and my grandparents were here before that. And I love San Clemente. I love everything that it represents. I have raised my four children, my three children here. My grandson is coming into the community all the time. And it's absolutely amazing. But what's more amazing is my relationship with my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And this, last year when COVID hit and my church was closed, which happens to be the other church you were speaking of. Um, I found myself at the outlets and the hope and the love and. I, I, I was brought to tears then and I walked in onto a, a parking lot of all things and then learning. The story and meeting John and Michelle, they are such good stewards of what has been given to them. And what they tell you is what they will do. They will be the best asset for the city of San Clemente. And everything that I've experienced with them is nothing more. They, they have to deal with some really difficult issues. And I've watched them with love and with kindness and with grace, deal with the community and lots of. Even opposition to some of the things and love on people and the hope, the change, what it's done for my family, what. This church has done for my children. I want that, my children are grown adults, by the way, I want that. For our community. And so I, I also do have a conditional use permit within the city of San Clemente. I'm a business owner. And I have a, a business right up, um, in the business district. So. I see a lot of children. I see a lot of people coming through. We have a foundation and I absolutely see what. Having Calvary right here in our community will do, the outreach that they will do. And how they will bring our community even more together than we are. So I highly recommend that you, um, accept. Their conditional use permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gretchen. And next is Brock, uh, Massurna or Massurn? Kind of tailed off there on the end of the name.
Yeah, that's my horrible writing. Uh, my name is Brock Merser. Um, I'm the owner of the Bale Shack here in Sacramento for the last, uh, twenty years. And, um, I've been attending Calvary Chapel, uh, in San Juan for the past eleven years, uh, myself and my family. Um, we've witnessed, uh, a lot of good things that the, um, church has done as far as, uh, getting, uh, things for schools. Um, getting things gathered for schools and stuff. Also, uh, supporting, uh, battalion in, uh, Camp Pendleton. Longest running, uh, events for families and, uh, children for, uh, the local families. On a personal note. My, uh. Sorry. My niece passed away about a year ago. And, um, you know, during the quarantine and, uh. We couldn't, we really didn't have a place to, to go for, to throw a funeral. Uh, John was able to open up his doors during the quarantine. So we can have a funeral for my niece and that really helped our family out, uh, which was really nice one, but that just goes to show you. You know, what a church is supposed to do and that's, um, kind of what Calvary Chapel believes. Um, kind of, uh, you know, love your neighbors yourself, um, things of that nature and what the Bible teaches. I know there's a couple of concerns as far as, um, parking and sound and, um, and growing. As far as parking, I don't know if you guys have been to Bale Shack in the weekend, but I know a little bit about, uh, parking, so a little ridiculous. Um. I have a family of five girls, so early really isn't in our vocabulary. So we're running late a lot and with the twelve, uh, staff members that they have to help park the cars, um, they do a great job. And when church gets out, it's not like leaving Dodger Stadium, it's very well organized. Uh, everyone goes out nice and smooth. So, um. I don't think parking will be an issue. Uh, sound, um, I, I sit outside sometimes to enjoy the sun. Um, my, uh, I hear the teaching and, uh, sound really is not an issue. I, I don't believe that I'm not a professional in decibels or anything like that. But I really don't think sound will be an issue. Um, and you know, I know Pastor John lives by, you know, love your neighbors as yourself. Doing others as you want to do and, you know, to you. So I'm guarantee we'll go out of our way to, uh, make sure we don't cause any problems with any of the neighbors. Uh, so that's about it. I really think, uh, Calvary Chapel of OC, um, would be a great addition for, uh, Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brock. Uh, Larry Tiberi. And then next would be, uh, Guillermo, uh, Balsam. Paul Macedo.
Hello, folks. Uh, my name's Larry. You may know me as Son of Sam Shoe Store. We've been, uh, here sixty-eight years. I grew up here. Went to high school here and, um, now back, uh, working at the store. Uh, Calvary Chapel is a fantastic place. Um, I went up to Calvary Costa Mesa maybe forty, fifty years ago and found the Lord there and started a relationship. I moved away for thirty years, came back and my wife and I were looking for a place to fellowship and have church. And she said, I saw this little cute church by, uh, mission. So we went there and I went in and started listening, started praying and it, it was, it's just amazing. We both were taught, we both were loved there. Um, this place is a community, it's a family. It's something that's really going to make, uh, San Clemente better. So without any more saying, please approve.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Guillermo. And next will be Stacy Warner.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Guillermo, but you're close. Um. Our family moved to San Clemente, uh, in two thousand and four, um, a couple of years after I retired from a career in the Air Force. I'm currently a pilot with JetBlue Airways and, um, I live at the top of Pico in the community of Solana. So just about fifteen minute walk from, from this, this, this new site. Um, our children attended what is now Capo B or what is now San Clemente Christian School. So we're grateful for, for, for Nikki. Our kids graduated from San Clemente High School. We have been grateful to be a part of this community. Uh, but you know what? We're even more grateful to be a part of, of, of Calvary Chapel. Um, it's been amazing to see, uh, especially since last year and, and this, what we've been doing at the outlets. Uh, week to week to seeing the, the, the people whose lives are, are changed, the, the lives that have been healed by. Uh, as the, as people here, the ministry or the ministry by the gospel of Jesus Christ. Uh, and it's, it's just been, been incredible to, to see that. But we personally have some friends who, who have, uh, have been living some, some crazy lives and have heard the gospel and have been, have responded and. And, and we've seen some amazing lives changed. Uh, as was already been said, our facility in, in San Juan, I mean, we, we outgrew that years ago, it seems like. Uh, moving to San Clemente is going to be an, an amazing thing, or you're hopefully moving to San Clemente. Uh, we're going to be able to do a lot more. I've been blessed to be a part of the ministry that, that does stuff in, in Camp Pendleton. Uh, our church is involved with so many things. I think some of the people are going to be speaking here as well, but, um, I. We're excited about this new opportunity. We look forward to, to, I look forward to being able to walk to, to church personally, but anyway. Uh, and thank you for your guys, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Stacy Warner. And next would be Todd Warner.
Hi, I'm Stacy Warner. Um, I'm a resident of San Clemente and I am honored to be here tonight to speak to you. On why Calvary San Juan should move to this building in San Clemente. Pastor John and his wife, Michelle Randall, and the church, Calvary San Juan Capistrano, has affected my life in such an amazing way. My husband has been in recovery for almost five years now and during COVID, we saw many people go back to drugs or alcohol. We also knew of several who passed away from overdoses or complications from alcohol. Because of our own life experiences, God has put it on her, our hearts to help others who have been affected by addiction. When we moved to San Clemente just five years ago, my husband was in rehab and when we got out, when he got out. We knew there was a reason for what our family had gone through. My husband and I work with people in recovery every week, sometimes even daily. During COVID, it was heartbreaking to see how people fell out of recovery and went back to their addictions. And we could do nothing to help them because churches were closed and people were. And we could do nothing to help them because churches were closed and people were afraid to be around each other. We did Zoom and online church at the beginning, just like everybody else did at that time. But then we realized COVID was not as bad as we thought and we made a decision to not live in fear. We realized we needed to be back in church and we needed to be taking people in recovery to church like we used to do so they could find hope. We found Calvary Chapel San Juan at the outlets in August 2020 and we have brought many people to the outlet parking lot who have found salvation and hope in the Lord. Many, many lives have been changed. Not realizing that I would go through something difficult in a couple of months after finding the church. My grandmother got sick and we were not thinking she was going to pass away. She got sick on December 1st, 2020 and died on the 22nd. We went to the church and asked about having a service for her. Although we were new members, it seemed like we had known this church family forever. Pastor John came to our house. He met with my family. He showed us great love and compassion. And after that, we were able to have a service, service for my grandmother that was absolutely beautiful. It was just what our family needed. And the love we felt was the love of Jesus. So out of this terrible COVID experience, we found a beautiful thing and that is our church. When I say the church, I'm not talking about a building. I'm talking about the people that make up the church. You see, Calvary San Juan and soon to be Calvary South OC are the people that you want helping in, in the city of San Clemente. They have a heart for people and go to many lengths to be the hands and feet of Jesus. They have a wonderful children's program that will bless many families in our city. They, I was able to serve at the kids VBS in the summer vacation Bible school and it is something I will never forget. Through playing, singing and doing crafts and hearing Bible stories, many children have learned to find Jesus. I'm trying to hurry. Um, my niece was actually one of these people and it was such a blessing to me. Calvary South OC is a place where kids do not have to be in fear.
Thank you, Stacy. The red lights.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to tell you, um, with a lot of people in addictions right now, this is what the city of San Clemente needs. Our church would be such a benefit to this city.
Thank you, Stacy. Todd Warner and then Michelle Rand.
She's been leading me for 28 years, so I'll make this a little shorter, but yeah, thank you and good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, both to support our community and also to support Calvary Chapel. To begin, I, I just want to say that I strongly support the move at Calvary Chapel to San Clemente. My name is Todd Warner and my wife and our three boys are residents of San Clemente. Uh, I work in the construction industry. I do a lot of the remodels here in town. Kitchen remodels and bathroom models. And my wife didn't mention this, but she's a counselor in the Capistrano Unified School District. As noted, my wife and I also have a non-for-profit called Recover You that is located in San Clemente. We volunteer our time to meet with those struggling with drug and alcohol addictions in our community. My family began attending Calvary Chapel at the time it was San Juan Cap, maybe it still is, but it's moving to South OC two years ago, and it's been such a blessing in our lives. During a time when our city and state pretty much shut down, Pastor John and Calvary Chapel moved their Sunday services mentioned to the outlet parking lot safely providing those in our community a place to attend church. During this time, I saw the church grow weekly as many new residents living in San Clemente became, began to attend. More importantly, Calvary has become a safe place of refuge for those in need while teaching God's word and providing love and support to the residents of San Clemente, even before moving to San Clemente. Pastor John and Calvary Chapel have made a tremendous impact on our cities. The lives and lives are being impacted. Those in need are being helped. And this move will only continue to support the work that's already being started. I love our church and in closing, I would welcome all of you to attend. If you don't have a fellowship, it's a great place to be. Thanks for letting me share.
I'm Michelle Randall. Thank you for taking the time to hear us this evening. I've been a resident of San Clemente for 16 years. I've attended and served at Calvary Chapel in San Juan Capistrano for 15 years, where I currently teach the weekly women's Bible study twice a week on Friday mornings and on Monday evenings. Since May of 2020, we have seen a surge of hurting and hungry people. People that are looking for hope in a hopeless world. Many are fearful and, and we see them every single week. Each week we hear stories of people sharing with us that since coming to Calvary Chapel, their family dynamics have completely changed for the better. Being at the San Clemente outlets for the past 18 months on Sunday mornings has been a blessing to us and our community. We've seen countless lives changed, marriages restored, genuine lives, genuine joy in the lives of the people. And we've seen them grow in the word, in their love for each other, their love for the Lord. Calvary is more than a church. It's a family. With over half of our congregants as residents of the city of San Clemente, we would consider it an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to minister even more effectively to the growing needs of our congregation by granting us the CUP and making San Clemente our new home. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Field. And then Jane Wall.
Hi, thank you. My name is Doug Field. I've been a resident of San Clemente since 1967. I was 11 years old then. And I grew up here and I've been a continuous resident since then, except when I was at UCLA for a few years. I had a dental practice in town for 33 years. We recently retired. And my wife and I are both retired now. We raised three children here. They went to San Clemente High Shore Cliffs. And now two of my children still are living in San Clemente with their own family and we have four grandkids in town. So we're, we're staying. I love San Clemente. And I'd just like to say that I totally support Calvary coming to town. They've been such a blessing to my wife, myself. We've been through some hard things like a lot of people have through COVID and, and even before that. And just with prayer support, counseling. And I think they'd be a wonderful asset to San Clemente. I won't rehash a lot of the things, but they've done so much. They have a real heart to help people. They've always been a good community member and I know they'll be the same here. And we drove over to see the facility last Saturday and my wife and I are really happy because we can walk there now, save gas. We live in Forrester Ranch and it's a good walk, but we can do it. So I would just like to say I really support them and hope they'll be approved. We're looking forward to having them as a in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Jane Wall and then Eric Ross.
Thank you, Planning Committee. I appreciate having the time to share with you for just a few minutes. My name is Jane Wall and I am a 13-year resident of San Clemente and the Executive Director of the Pregnancy Resource Center Medical Clinic, which is a nonprofit organization located right here in San Clemente. And we've been in this city for over 15 years and it's been so wonderful to be here. We've been welcomed by the community itself. We've been welcomed by so many people, different churches and businesses. And we're, it's just really been wonderful to be in the city and to be able to minister to the needs of the people here. I've also attended Calvary Chapel San Juan Capistrano and have been since 2010. As a local resident and business leader and a congregant of the church, I'm excited at the prospect of having Calvary Chapel San Juan Capistrano occupy the building in the Tulega Business Park. The reasons for this are many, but I'll mention just a few for the sake of time. So much has been said already, so many beautiful things. I echo many of those. But I want to speak a little bit about the senior pastor, John Randall, because he is the leader, the senior, as the senior pastor, he's an exemplary leader. He is above reproach. He's faithful, honest, a good steward and overseer. He is charitable and what we call a good shepherd. Calvary Chapel San Juan Capistrano thrives under his leadership. And the need for more parking and space is representative of such. Over the years, I've witnessed not just the growth in the church, but how it's managed and how it's received within the community. The conduct there is orderly regardless of venue size. Safety and security are a high priority. From the worship to the parking, there's a sense of order, respect and conscientiousness of others and of being good neighbors. Pregnancy Resource Center partners with over 10 local churches, including Calvary Chapel San Juan Capistrano, to reach people in crisis. Calvary Chapel San Juan Capistrano goes above and beyond in giving of their time and resources to assist in us in serving our community. They're reliable, generous and quick to help those who are hurting, distressed and need a helping hand. And I think you've heard several of those testimonies already this evening. As a ministry and located here in San Clemente, it's so important that we have the covering and the support of churches. And like I said, many are right here in San Clemente. So to have Calvary Chapel in San Juan reach out in a very big way to us, whether it was during COVID for disinfectant, what do you need? What, what can we do to help you? What can, how can we pray for you? Is there something your volunteers, your staff need during this time so you can minister to those that are hurting? Do you need to send us your clients? Can we help you in any way? They were always there, first on the spot. So I can't think of a better use for the subject building than to have Pastor John and his team bring their work ethics, integrity, quality and caring leadership and move CCSJC to San Clemente to be Calvary Chapel South County. Calvary Chapel South County. Well, I'm sorry. They are such a blessing and will be a tremendous addition to our city, the community and new neighbors at the Tulega Business Park. Thank you.
Thank you again. Eric Ross and then Lydia Jensen.
Hello, Eric Ross. I'm going to be short and sweet. Born and raised in San Clemente. And I'm a third generation business owner, SC Furniture. Sam Shoe is a little older than us, but just barely. I've been attending at Calvary for a little while now. Absolutely love the church and excited to have it come to San Clemente because I don't like to leave town. Going to be a great addition. And like everybody talked about, parking is an issue or a sound. What it's going to do is benefit all the families that attend there. Strong families raise strong children that benefit the communities for the future and that's what we all want, which is going to be great. Yeah, that's about it. Shop local and yeah, see you at church.
Thank you, Eric. Lydia Wall. Excuse me. Jensen.
I live across the street from the church and I first want to start by saying this is not a criticism of the church of Calvary Chapel. I heard all these testaments and they're beautiful and I have my own relationship with God and I, and I, you know, I believe this church is very important in our life. But this is about a planning committee and about quality of life issues. And I've lived across the street from this building for 20 years. I know, I, you don't have to guess or wonder. I can tell you firsthand the noise issues. Several things this gentleman said tonight caused me concern because I know them to be different. One, I did make a complaint to San Clemente, to City Hall several times. It was always Sundays or Mondays. No one ever got back or if they did, they were going to send somebody out. There was never follow-up for me. Two, when you mentioned that it wouldn't be a problem with sound because the church is at a lower elevation than the homes. Sound travels up, noise travels up. So that is absolutely misinformation that you had. Three, when you were addressing a question about vibrations, I don't know where that went, but something about horns. But our problem was the vibrations. We never heard, and if I heard singing, it was wonderful. I, that doesn't disturb us. If we hear singing or people praising God, I'm all for that. What I don't want to hear is living next door to like a nightclub. There were times in, I had a glass outside where you could see the water moving in the glass. So the idea that you will absolutely address decibels doesn't help our quality of life. I don't want to, on a Sunday, hear that. We do deal with traffic all week and that's fine. That was on us. We moved in and knowing that. But Sundays is a peaceful day. And if it was in your backyard on your day off, I don't know that you would love a 700-seat music venue basically going on. I would ask you to consider that if it was your own home and your own family, whatever you do on your Sundays. And the last item this gentleman said that concerns me is, well, if a lot of people, if several, if there's, if there's a lot of people complaining, then we'll do something. Whether it's 10 people complaining or two, it doesn't diminish my, what I, my suffering. If there's 100 people complaining and I'm feeling something, it doesn't diminish mine. And I can tell you, there's only eight houses on my street. And where that building is directly across, it's not going to affect people a mile away. It's not going to affect the house's more interior. It's going to affect two or three people on that street. And like we said, it's a wonky thing sound. So just consider it if it was your own yard. And I wish these people, every, all good things and maybe we'll be able to work things out. They seem very, you know, kind. But your comments about if a lot of people complain, then we'll do something. If it's a decibel issue, we'll do something, but nothing else. They won't hear it because their higher sound travels up.
Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you.
I think any other cards are very good. We will close the public comment section and open it up for discussion. Would anybody like to start?
Mr. Chairman.
Christian Cosgrove.
I just want to, first of all, thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's inconvenient. It's late at night and you're here. That means you care and that says a lot. And we really appreciate that because we're really mostly here by ourselves and having company is great, especially good company with good people. So I want to thank you. I want to acknowledge all the good things that I heard. But we are a planning commission about trying to bring about good sound planning decisions and I, I'm going to support this. But I do want to speak to Mrs. Jensen. I hear you. And I agree with you. Sound does travel up. It does. It goes right up your berm and I, I believe you. I also believe that the city staff, probably you didn't get the right spirit of them tonight. I understand what you heard. I do believe that they will be responsive, but what I'm hearing is the church will be really the best place to go. They'll be responsive. And if that doesn't work out, then I think you could come to the city. That's just my perspective on it. Would you agree with that? So I, I want to acknowledge what you said tonight. So with that, Mr. Chairman, when it's appropriate, I will, I'd be happy to offer motion.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion? Commissioner McCamp.
Yes, thank you, everyone who came out. It sounds like you guys are doing great work for the betterment of the community and the people. We all are in need at different times and I really appreciate the good work that you're doing as a church. I did hear Lydia and, and her concerns and I'm very understanding of those. Our job in the planning commission is to, is to see if what's being proposed fits within the box of what, what's allowed in those locations. And this one clearly does. I can agree with all the findings that are found in the, in the planning commission staff report. I would encourage the pastor and Lydia to exchange phone numbers. It sounds like they'll be very responsive. I would also encourage you to get Adam's phone number and email. And I know if you contact him directly, he will be responsive. So I am supportive of the project.
Very good. Any other comments?
I think a lot of this just has to be doing with being a good neighbor. I think the church will hopefully be a good neighbor. I think the church will hopefully be a good neighbor. As to the ability to complain to the city, if someone, I think one complaint is enough to get a response from the city. And if someone does not get responses, then you also have your planning commissioners to notify. So don't, you know, don't be shy because one complaint is enough to have the city act on it. I do have concerns, just, I'll be in favor, but I do have some concerns. Your lobby points directly at the parabolic, you know, hill. So if you don't control your lobby doors, if you don't control your sanctuary doors in terms of noise, it funnels right out, up the berm, up the street, up to the neighborhood. So that is somewhat of a disadvantage of the other church because most of their, their lobby points the opposite direction or a right angle. The other thing is you're bringing in some Wednesday programs, you know, from seven to nine. So you need to be careful of the neighborhood because that's also the time when people have already got home to work or having dinner. So you know, control the parking lot and young kids driving around too fast to make noises. Your eyes could have to be quiet. Your eyes are gonna have to be concerned with the noise that you're working under a conditional use permit. And I think that's it. Otherwise, I am.
No comment.
I want to, including everyone here, you certainly showed us what is great about San Clemente and I think staff did a good job of evaluating the project. Adam, is there anything on the main room as far as acoustics that we've done in the past to make sure that best construction practice is used to contain the noise because it'll mainly come from the main room, correct? It's, it's not common, but I'd love to hear his comment real quickly just on that one item on acoustics.
Tony Torres and the architect of the project. We've, Vision Earrings worked with churches now since two thousand two. So we do mostly churches. We deal with acoustics in churches all the time. We have acousticians and other audio visual consultants that help us provide reports that uphold staff recommendations. So the location of the worship space is actually towards the middle of the building. It's not at the end of the building. So you're actually buffered by the children's ministry spaces and the lobby. So you're not, you don't have, actually have a direct opening out to Pico. So we feel like the location of the space and then other sound mitigation, things that we can do, putting sound attenuation in the walls and other sound absorbed materials in the walls are definitely going to be able to address that. In terms of what's been talked about as low frequency versus high frequency sounds, there's obviously things that you can do for both of those measures to keep the sound within the room. So obviously the sixty-five decibel at, you know, three hundred feet or whatever from, from this church, that's the easy part. But we can work with an acoustician to provide that control for the low frequency sounds as well.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have a question specifically for the architect? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I think, so everyone knows we've got one, two, three, five findings we need to make. And I can certainly, I think, make each of them pretty easily. And I would welcome a motion. I think you had offered. Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would move approval of resolution number PC twenty-one dash zero one nine, which is a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California approving conditionally use permit twenty-one dash two thirteen. Cal, Calvary Chapel, a request to establish a church within a portion of an existing office building at one, three, one, one, Cali Batido.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Commissioner Camp is the second and Cosgrove is the motion. Commissioner McCracken?
Aye.
Commissioner Connor?
Aye.
Let's go down to Commissioner Camp.
Aye.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Aye. Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I. Congratulations. And we're honored to have all of you as part of the community, including those that are concerned about the sound. We will definitely pay attention and not let that slide. The next item is new business, planning staff update, which I think Adam's gonna give us a heads up. And then I'm gonna ask if any members of commission have any thoughts or comments on things we can do to help the staffing levels.
If it pleases you, maybe a couple of seconds to let the, yeah, the crowd dissipate.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Commissioner Prescott LaFleur has joined the Zoom.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes.
I, I do see her name. She had the late night drive from San Diego.
You know.
Just want to welcome our colleague. I, I actually don't believe that she's on because all the commissioners have to be in this, at the place where the, the meeting is being held. I think that's just, the computer is on.
Place holder.
Ah, okay, gotcha.
Anticipation. Okay, okay. Well, thank you, Chair and Commission for the opportunity to speak on the current state of our planning division staffing. So the, there have been a number of issues over the past, actually past couple of years that have impacted our current, current planning staff. I should say our, our current planning staffing. And it started with COVID really had a big impact. COVID had an impact on in a couple of ways. The, the first was that there were some economic uncertainties in this time. And so if people left, the city was not immediately refilling those positions. And the second was it was, it was not known how long COVID was gonna last or what the overall impact is to our workload would be. And so fast forward to a more recent months, we've had a number of staff that have left. You know, some have, have moved on and accepted bigger positions and, and that's something that we want to see. We want to be able to provide that path forward. However, the city as a whole is in a place where we have a number of vacancies. And so our HR division is doing a phenomenal job trying to fill those, those vacancies. More to the point, our planning division has essentially has ten, what we call FTE, full-time equivalent staff. One of those includes me and I also oversee a separate division and programs. So I'm not going to include myself in this calculation, even though I do serve as the city planner. Aside from myself, we would have nine positions. We would have two administrative staff and seven planners. Currently, we have one administrative staff. We have four staff planners and we have two. I'll just say two part-time contract planners, though they do not equal, they don't even equal one FTE in terms of the amount of time that we get from them. And then we have a, a part-time intern. So there have been three recruitments that were posted last week for the positions that are vacant as far as planning positions go. And those are a, a senior planner, a, an associate slash assistant planner recruitment. And our entry level position is a, what we call a comm, excuse me, community development technician. The associate slash assistant recruitment is geared for the potential that one of our, one of our staff that's at an assistant level now could be the successful candidate to acquire the associate position. Great for them, does not add any staff to our, to our, to our division. So if that's the, that's the case, then we would have an eligibility list created from this recruitment so that we could also, we could promote staff within while we fill a, a lower position. And so though the first review of those positions is, it's, it's either November twenty-third or the twenty-fourth, which is essentially the end of next week. Based on that timing and just how things typically go, it, it takes a few months to get new staff in a, in a government agency. In addition to having them actually, you know, start on the job and sit at a desk, it takes a few months to get, you know, people, you know, fully up and running. And I, I don't want to say a few months, but it, there's, there's a, there's a break in period of time where people need to learn the code and they need to, you know, figure out, you know, everything, where the microwaves are and, and how our programs work and things of that nature. So we have a short-term solution in place right now. What we're doing is we are going to fill the, the vacant admin position. There, there are some opportunities within city staff to move people around. And that actually is benefit for, for the, the, for all the divisions affected by this. So we'll have that taken care of. We, we have a, an internal staff promotion to provide some additional hours for a, one of our, one of our existing staff that has, that does a lot of the front counter stuff, which is things that we need dealt with, dealt with. And then we also are going to ultimately have two and a half FTE of contract planning staff that we anticipate to have for, for a few months. We have had, we've had quite a lot of success with contract planners in the past. I know that it's, you know, I know that people typically want only in-house staff, but ultimately that's a management issue. When, when new staff come on, they're all in the same boat that a contract staff would be in at the, at this moment. And so I, I don't have any, any qualms about supervising contract staff. The ones that we have had recently have been, have been phenomenal. And, and I know that they're going to be of great benefit. Additionally, contract staff typically deal with the types of permits that every jurisdiction gets. They're not going to be, take, they're not going to be processing applications that are for a new development that in an architectural overlay that's also at a gateway location of the city. That's just that, that's something that in-house staff will deal with. So that is our, that is our short-term plan for right now. We, there is a backlog of work that we need to get through. And there is a, a, just a, a certain amount of work that we believe to be very similar to pre-COVID times. So we will, we will be addressing this over the next few months to ensure that we can not only provide enough staffing to deal with the amount of work that's coming in, but provide enough staffing to get rid of the backlog so that we are, are able to meet timeframes that are in the best interest of our applicants and the communities, the community that we serve. As far as support for doing all of this, I will, I have to give thanks to the city manager's office. Mr. Sun has, has been incredible in this time working with, with, with Cecilia Guayrada Daley, our community development director, as well as myself and the planning staff to ensure that, that everybody is aware of what we're doing and that we're doing everything that we possibly can. Eric has been nothing but supportive of what we need. And at this point in time, there's really nothing else that, that could be done as far as staffing is concerned. I know that in speaking with staff, when there are these opportunities for revising or reevaluating some of the processes that we use, we, we definitely want to analyze the, the solutions that can be done quickly that would create a, a large benefit. Some of these things staff has done in the past. Our zoning lookup tool, for example, is something that we've put out there to, to, to help. You know, as I told staff the other day, it, it's nice when a change leads to an immediate big impact. But at the end of the day, that doesn't happen that often. It generally takes people some time to acclimate to things. And, you know, having worked in this city for more than a decade, I can say that the, the greatest, longest lasting changes occur in relatively small steps. The difference being that you're consistently making these kinds of small steps. Right now, we need, we do need to make some, some big changes just to deal with some things. But we are looking at, at some of these other small steps that we can begin to make to just make the process better and easier in the long term. So that's where we are right now. I'm more than happy to answer any questions if there are any. Okay, Commissioner Camp.
So these people, we're losing people, basically, is what's happening. We're losing staff.
We have lost some staff. I can tell you right now, I don't, I have not talked to anybody that's informed me that they are planning on leaving.
Well, Katie left.
Katie was one of, one of the last ones.
Katie accepted a, a, a position that no planner in her right mind should say no to.
From where she is. There's a good reason, but leading to my question is, you know, I've, I've worked in this industry for a long time. And you run into the planners kind of jumping from one city to the next. Is there any thought being given to how can we, you know, draw some of these people towards San Clemente? I mean, what, what is it that's luring them to some of these other cities? I mean, the obvious, you know, things are wage, you know, salary.
Absolutely.
Benefits, things like that. I mean, how do we compare to some of the other cities? And are we doing anything to, to try and, you know, up the ante on that?
That's a great question, Commissioner Camp. The answer is yes. The city is doing something. It's not specifically related to planning, to retaining planning staff. It's a citywide effort and it comes out of the recent MOU with the employee association. And what that MOU did was it provided for some pay increases and some one-time payouts for city staff over the next, I will say, within the next two years, this year being included. In the third year, a class and comp study will be done, which looks at the classification as well as the compensation of our employer, employees to determine whether our, the pay that we provide is commensurate with the work that they do and is comparable to benchmark cities. So that will be done in three years. Whether that could be done sooner, I have, I haven't heard any plans for it. It would make the most sense that it be done at the same time as it's done for the rest of the city. As I, I would assume that most, most, most divisions would be in the same boat since our class and comp studies typically are citywide, not, not division by division.
Do you know if we're seeing any, you know, good qualified applicants that are submitting resumes or is it pretty dry out there?
Well, I can tell you the last recruitment we did was did not, did not yield a, a very Did not, did not yield a, a, a very large slate of highly qualified individuals. That is a sentiment that is, has been, I've heard from other cities. As well as even some consulting firms that provide contract staff, uh, are, are having the same issues. You know, just, just trying to find contract staff that has been, has taken up a, a large portion of my time over the last couple of weeks. And I'm aware that other jurisdictions have had open recruitments. That remain unfilled for positions similar to what we're recruiting for. One note on the, on the recruitments, uh, we are offering, uh, signing bonuses. For, um, all of the positions, uh, for a senior planner, it'd be twenty-five hundred for the associate planner. Assistant planner, it would be fifteen hundred and then for. The comm, uh, community development technician, it would be a thousand. And it's also, uh, just so it's on the record, it's, that does not apply only if you are an external candidate applying for the job. It would also apply if you are internal. Is that, would you get those questions from time to time?
Okay, uh, I, I was kind of curious, um. I'm getting the feeling that most of the planners are thinking they. Are doing a job. And being a planner, it's really a career. Are we aggressively trying to help? Our staff improve themselves with additional continuing education? Because we talk about wanting qualified people, we want to make sure. Our people have every tool possible to be those qualified people. And we'll keep staff if they know their career is. Moving up and their value is moving up as well. I think they'll stick around longer. If it's just a job, it's. You know, you lose. A lot of motivation in doing your, uh, job well, if you think that's, it's just repetitious.
I couldn't agree with you more. That's, um. That, that's, that's one of the things that, um, I believe. Put me in this position. I've been managing, uh, staff for a number of years now. And one of the things that I have, um, have, have done is, uh, I've taken. Divisions that are. In need of some T L C, um, and. Call it, uh, building up of staff and I have improved them and I, I, I've shown that in, in. A number of divisions and programs, um, and I, that's just how I operate. So that is the mindset that I'm operating under. Uh, when I first started with the city. I was, I, I started in planning and, uh, I was there in planning for. Six years. And in all of that time, the only new staff that showed up were interns. And they were there for a specific period of time because they were fulfilling some college graduation requirements. Some of those interns though have become our, our current staff. So we, we definitely, um, we definitely love interns. But as far as. What I've known the planning division to, to be, it has, it has been that place where. Staff want to remain, they want to build the career, they want to, they, they want to do legacy projects in the city. And that's, that's, that's the planning division I came up in. Um, and, and I, 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 I see that the changes that have occurred over the last few years. Have moved us away from, from that and I completely understand. The, the desire and the need and the benefit for having a, a planning division where. Where people, uh, feel encouraged and supported and have a desire to. You know, to, to move up rather than move out. Like I said, there have been some external issues that have occurred in the last few years that have. You know, that have unfortunately fundamentally changed, um, many, you know, many city operations. But, uh, but my desire is to get back to a very strong planning division. All, I, I have a great relationship with city staff around, yeah, in all divisions and departments. Just by virtue of, of where I've worked in the city, I've been able to, to meet and, and form relationships with these people. And I can tell you, everybody's job is critically important. However, planning I think is for San Clemente is a part of our identity. I don't think it's, it's ever, I would never look at this as just a job. Um, I look at this as the, the reason why people move here. And when I talk about those slow incremental or the small incremental changes over time that make the biggest difference. There, the, you can look at the, this city's planning policies and regulatory framework with which we, uh, we, we. Envisioned community development and you can see how it's, it's a very long. It, and focused effort on community development that has made this town what it is today. And, uh, while I, um. I, I don't foresee any issues working with contract staff. That's not the goal in the long term. I want. I want people that are in this, um, for a, a, a solid amount of time. And it's natural for people to want to move up and they, you know, there's. You know, there's fewer senior planners than there are associate and assistant planners. So we, you know, it's natural to lose people from time to time. But I want to encourage people, uh, to stay for the long haul.
I got a couple.
I, I got a question for Commissioner Tyler. As you came up through the ranks in planning. What was your biggest motivation to stay at one place for any length of time? Was it diversity in tasks? Was it, uh? I mean, you've obviously gone all the way up, not all the way up the career path, but, uh.
And I started as intern, so I'm sort of on a similar path as you. Is a couple of things. It was the investment of the city in me. So I think it sounds like you guys are, are doing that. Wage was a huge thing. I was working for the municipality that paid the most in the entire state. Um, and a lot of that had to do with cost of living. And so obviously cost of living now is kind of exponentially. And wages everywhere have not caught up. So that's something that, you know, they just did a wage study. But the problem is, is you do a wage study, doesn't mean you get paid more tomorrow. You have to go through. The budgetary process and we're talking, I think it was like five million extra dollars a year of paying staff. So. It's not as simple as doing a wage study and everyone just goes and gets paid. Um, but then the other thing to your point was, you know, the types of projects you get to work on. Um, I think giving your staff, like you said, legacy projects, things like that, um, more long-range tasks for maybe your junior planners to grow up, grow into. Uh, it, it sounds like that's the framework you're building this department around. And so I think to the extent that. You can give those junior staff something to work towards and partner up with the senior planner, whatever the framework might be. To me, that's the most successful way to get buy-in of your staff. They want to be there. This is also an interesting community. It's not. You know, just a community full of subdivisions. There's some unique cultural and community development aspects to it that you won't find anywhere else. And so I think, you know, to the extent you can sell that in a, in a advertisement of the job. I'd say that would be, that would be my advice is, is sort of sell the community. Cause I think that's, that's to me is your planner or a part of your community. They're ones.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're the ones telling, you know, not telling its council's policies, but. They're helping determine the vision for the future.
We're short-termers, although I've been here a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're not. They're, they're the consistent staff that really needs to carry over. What's been done. So there's, uh. Some history built into the planning staff and right now we're lacking that. No, it's been over, like you said, the last, I'm going to say four years. The camaraderie, the family, the, um, people moving up, um. Adam's a good example of the career path. Starting in planning, going to code enforcement. Now he's come back to, uh, sort things out for us at the planning, uh, department again. Variety, he's, he's going to have a great resume. Speaking of. That's what all these people really.
Yes.
I mean.
No, absolutely, but.
Self-value, yeah.
You know, it's, it's interesting and I, I did fail to mention this. You speak about variety, um, and Commissioner Tyler. Talked about a variety of projects. That is something else that we have, uh, have, have looked into. A few months ago, when I, when I, um, took this position. One of the things that I noticed was a substantial change from the last time that I was in planning was there was a. There's a, a clear cut between long-range planning and, uh, current planning. And when I was in planning, I did both and I love both. And in speaking with some of the staff, it seemed like that might be a desire with the current state that we're in. If we have, have made the decision to move back into a more blended. Blended format, if you will, of, of, of staff having. Long-range and current planning projects, um, which I agree is the best way to keep people. Motivated and, um, engaged. Uh, current planning is great because you get to complete stuff. Once in a while and you, you know, there's a, it's a, there's a revolving aspect to, to that work. But the, the things that make your resume better are typically long-range planning projects. Those are the things that. Every, you know, most cities at some point will, will have. Plans or, 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 you know, amendments that, that resemble what you're, you know, what, 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 what we do here. And so those, those are important projects for people to get experience in and, um, you know, and people don't want to feel tracked in one, one thing or another. And a lot of young players coming in, I, they don't. You know, it can take years to develop the, the critical thinking skills necessary to do quality, long-range planning projects. And so. The last thing I would want to do is make somebody feel like their, their opportunities are limited. So that is something else that we're doing because variety is the spice of life.
If any, any other comments by your questions?
I do.
And, oh, great.
Yeah, um, I have a, some comments, but this were really just lost, that lost. So I wanted to go back. How many openings do you have right now?
We have, we have three recruitments in place right now.
Okay, that are open, open recruitment.
Open recruitment.
Okay, and you are having challenges with the candidate pool?
Uh, you know what? I, it's, I have not looked at, we've only, the, the applications have been open for a week. I haven't checked in on that.
Okay. Gotcha. Alright, so just that you have three openings.
We have three openings.
Okay, is there anything you would, we can do to help you?
You know, um. We, we've posted the, uh, the recruitments in the places that we found that garner the greatest, uh, response. If, um, I know, like, uh, on LinkedIn, we, we put that in if you. Want to find these where, where we've posted or I can send you links if you have a network of people that might lead to some. People that are looking for jobs in planning, I'm more than happy to.
Great.
To send that and you can, you can forward those on. Otherwise, you know, at this point, you know, we have, we are getting tremendous support, uh, from the city manager's office. And. You know, we're, we're doing everything that, that we can at this point.
Yeah. Well, let's say I just wanted to offer when I was, uh, years ago in Irvine, which is a different department. It's. Had different challenges, but they also have a lot of people too. I basically, uh, back in, this back in, it goes to the eighties. I. Got as a citizen, um, decided something's wrong and I went to the city council as a citizen and started a movement. To have a general plan amendment around open space. And, and that moved me actually into an appointment on the planning commission. And I did something I'm not doing here and I'm not saying I want to do it, but I, I worked with the staff directly. Because my passion, like we, this is the vision. We have to go big. We have to sit for Irvine company. We have to move all this around. It was probably one of the most complicated, biggest general plan amendments the city ever has ever done. And then I actually went and collected enough ballot signatures to put it on the ballot and we made the electorate ratify it. When I did that, what I noticed working with the, this planning staff directly and having a direct rapport. Is they had seniors, but every senior had several juniors under them for the big project. So when we were doing the big open space plan, many juniors were, would come in and out of certain elements of it. Okay, you, so they would come under a senior, you're going to drive the hillside, uh, policy. And they would have the opportunity to work with a, a senior person, get excited about, oh, okay. By day I'm doing these permits, but I have the, I'm working on this big policy thing with the senior person. And that's, they're contributing, but they're being mentored. Their, their, their job is a little bit bifurcated in the sense that they had their regular routine. But they had this mentoring opportunity, but they were actually contributing to pieces of the big, of strategic plans. And so I, I would sit literally at night with the junior planners with the senior planner. And we would just go round and round and chew and chew and go until, and they, and it was just an opportunity where. They felt really like they're part of, they're part of it, you know? So that would be my only, just to share that, you know, to the degree that you can partner junior people with senior people on big things. Not that it takes a lot of their time, but enough that, you know, they get that relationship with the senior person to get that experience. Those junior people came to the commissions. They did, were part of the people presenting. So it was, it was a whole program really where the whole department actually ended up getting behind this and super excited. And they, at, at the end of the day, just about every planner is totally invested in this change. And it was, uh, fun to be part of, but I just got behind the scenes for a little bit to see. You know, how this really impacted junior people and I saw them really get engaged and committed and. Some of those people are still there. Now they're the senior people and they came up and, and, uh, some of my, uh, close friends today are some of those people. So for whatever that's worth, if that's helpful, but.
I appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other comments on this item? Uh, drop, if you have any epiphanies, uh, just drop a note to Adam. I'm sure he'd love any, uh.
I think the unfortunate things, we're also, we're just not the only city with the problem. So we're all going after the same candidates.
Absolutely right. And that's why it's important to keep the staff we've got because they're the only ones to train. Even the seniors, I don't know who you're going to have train the senior. Um, I hate to see a junior guy doing that and. Kind of passing up on an opportunity to climb the ladder. But anyway.
Well, let me just say, as, you know, I've kind of been listening here. It seems like the key thing is, I think, Commissioner Tyler mentioned is really ex, try and exploit. The fact that we're a unique city and you have these kind of opportunities. It sounds like you're doing, I mean, that's a big part of.
I, I, I sell that point on, uh, you know, as, as my main topic on many discussions, not just about recruitment.
Yeah.
Okay, let, let's go to old business. We've got none and reports from commissioners and staff. I came to talk to city council last night to say I wasn't going to be at the joint meeting. And let him ask any questions. I got, uh. Surprised, uh, they were hearing on the, uh, possibility of bringing back. The outside dining. So that's something we'll be thinking about, uh, here in the near future and, uh. I've got ideas. It's not agenda, so we can't go over anything now, but that'll be something that'll be on our slate. And, uh, I think, oh, and I, um. Told them you would be our representative at the, uh, meeting on the thirtieth and. Those that are in town, please go to the, the meeting. It's a good chance to meet the city council, find out what they didn't. Uh, they're up to, uh. And also meet, uh, other volunteers and all the other commissions. It's a.
I assume we have to be careful, uh, what we talk about.
Um, it's an agendized meeting.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, so. Um, yeah, so you'll, you'll be okay.
Okay. Um, so we could talk about anything or we're.
You can discuss those items that are agendized.
Okay.
Which will just
Make sure we don't get in trouble.
That's right. And, uh, let's see, Adam, would you, um,
If before
Read the adjournment.
Can I make a, a please, a couple of statements? Uh, last, at last night's council meeting, they canceled the, uh, their first meeting in January, which would be January third. I believe it's the third. Um, the planning commission has typically canceled the first meeting in January uh, for the planning commission, which would be the next day, January fourth, I believe. Um, if the, if the commission would desire to do that at the last meeting of the year, we can simply adjourn to the following meeting. Um, uh, but I'm, I'm letting everybody know that. I'm not planning to, um, agendize an item to discuss that specifically. Um, but if the count, the commission would prefer that we do that, I I'm finding that as well.
Put it up on the, the last meeting to discuss and, and adjourn, but, uh, if there's any applicant that is waiting on getting an approval and staff has finished the documents, I think we're coming into a point where we're going to be so far behind, we don't want to be, uh, passing two weeks and slowing down a, an applicant unnecessarily.
Okay. Okay, well, um, with that, I can, uh, just make a note that the adjournment listed here is, is incorrect because it's not, um, doesn't list the November thirtieth meeting. So I will read a, an adjournment that is correct and then something.
Then whoever wants to, um, say unmoved emotion, some adjourn.
We, we are meeting, uh, next week, right, for D, uh, design review, so.
Correct. There is a meeting.
And there's items, I assume on that.
It's in the back of our book here.
Okay, no, I don't want to waste our time. I was just going to make sure.
Yeah, there may not be. I, I can tell you, the December eighth planning commission meeting does not have any, there are no public hearing items on it unless there's a, um, a study session item or, uh, new business.
Yeah, there's nothing itemized on the twenty-fourth, the eleventh twenty-fourth. For design review, I don't see anything listed here, so.
Or the eighth for that matter.
Right. Uh, the twenty-fourth, that one, there's still some time to, um, put things on that agenda. I'm assuming there probably will be.
Okay.
Uh, so with that, um, the adjournment for tonight, if somebody wants to make a motion on this would be to adjourn to an adjourned regular planning commission meeting to be held on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM in the municipal golf course banquet room located at one fifty Avenue of Magdalena, San Clemente, for the purpose of meeting in joint session with city council and other city committees and commissions.
I knew that we adjourned per that announcement.
Okay, uh, Bushfire McCann, uh, do we have a second?
A second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Camp, uh, Commissioner Cockin.
I.
Commissioner Tyler.
I.
Commissioner Camp.
I.
Uh, Commissioner Caswell.
I.
Commissioner Camp.
I.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I. That's unanimous, don't worry. And, um, we can leave our books here.